It's a lot better than...
All right. Seeing that our six three haven't arrived, I'll call the Tuesday, September 19th council meeting to order. Roll call, Michelle.
McCormick, here. Schulgit?
Here.
Brady?
Here.
Benny?
Here.
Gadel?
Here.
Singer?
Here.
Have every rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up we have the consent agenda. Is there anything, anybody who would like to add or remove at this time?
Um, yes. One to pull up to.
Move approval with that change?
Second.
That's moving to second, approve the consent agenda with that one modification. Michelle, would you please read?
I just want to confirm I didn't hear. Did Jim Allen want to re- remove O2 from the consent agenda?
That would be correct.
Okay. Approval of council minutes of September 5th, 2017. Approval of payment of invoices processed through September 13th, 2017. Acknowledgement of receipt and filing of the following. Landmarks Commission minutes of July 13th and August 3rd, 2017. And Parks and Recreation Board minutes of July 19th, 2017. And expedited approval of a resolution exempting Jefferson County Library tax.
That's the motion is to approve. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Michelle.
Schulgit?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Benny?
Aye.
Gadel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. We move on to our next item, which is city manager update. Cameron.
All right. Well, welcome everyone to campus. And we're trying it a little bit different tonight, so here we go. Ah, and it works fantastically well. Okay. Just the first item to report would be just update on recruitments and human resources for the city. A public works director has been offered a position and accepted position. And Mr. Brad Markward will begin. Services our public works director on October 16th is currently looking for an apartment locally, moving from the northern part of the state. So we're looking forward to having him here. Also, the administrative assistant deputy clerk position has been posted in lieu of the departure of Ms. Pennwell, our deputy clerk. A new wastewater treatment operator is beginning on September, actually began on September 18th. And then we have also been in negotiations regarding the Professional Police Supervisors Association within the police department. And that tentative or draft agreement has been provided to go before the, their executive officers, and then it will be coming to this body for approval. As well beyond those, those appointments of part-time with the possibility of becoming a full-time communications officer or dispatcher for the communications center in the police department is also up and open at this time. We were fortunate to have among our staff, we are fortunate to have among our staffs many qualified individuals that work for the city. And Michelle DeJardin is one who has the opportunity to be recognized for her professional decorum and, and skills as our recreation programmer for the city. She was awarded the 2017 Recreation Professional of the Year Award. There'll actually be a banquet held later this year on November 8th and 9th in recognition of that award as part of the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association meeting later this year. Just a couple of things that are going on in the city. Library currently researching three ideas to implement at the library. Additional short videos promoting library services. Looking for the possibility of patrons paying fines with debit or credit cards, which would be a new service. And looking to invest more resources into the maker space, which has become a popular item with the library. This just picture is not our, not our people at all. I just thought it was an interesting picture. Actually Kristin, Kristin assisted with, with some of the pictures as well. And so, but this is an interesting picture. Anyway, we've had our, our officers engage in a number of training opportunities every year. Crowd control training was one that recently was completed. So, hopefully not necessary for anything in town. Just a few items, things that the water department has been working on that we often don't talk about our individual divisions of public works or specific to-dos or, or tasks that, that happen. But just some of, of note, Staren Park Water Tower. We will be talking about it later. It is incredibly old. It's an aged structure. And as such, there are many things about it that are in need of repair regularly. The stairs, as well as some of the masonry, had been falling apart essentially, and work has been done to improve that and clean it up. Also, working on shut-off boxes and curb stops. The goal would be to improve and keep every curb stop in the city in our geographic information system and make sure that they're all fully functional. Every year, our water department goes and checks those to make sure that we have properly performing curb stops among other infrastructure in the city. For those of you that might not know, that's, that's the valve at which point you, that's the valve at which point the water comes from the street into your own property, your lateral. So it's important to make sure that that is a valve that functions for a number of reasons. So that's just some work they've been working on. This week as well, we engaged in a, an excavation training for our personnel, especially in public works, but also in the police department. We also involved professionals from Walworth County, as well as our risk management firm that we work with, CivMac, Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance. So those are some things that have, that have been going on. I'm going to skip through the next one and just announce that an event coming up on October 5th, Insurance Made Simple. This is something being provided by the Innovation Center in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. If you have any interests or you know of someone... Oh, did it go? Here it didn't go. There we go. Insurance, this probably makes more sense. There we go. If you know someone that owns a small business or has any, any questions regarding insurance or insuring a small organization, this would be an opportunity to go and learn more about it. Also, the Greater Whitewater Committee and, and their community partners, including the city, engaged in and pulled off, I think, a successful event this, this last weekend. If you were here on Sunday, you may have seen a lot of fun and exciting activity going on as well Saturday. We had a total of 695 registrations for participation in the Discover Whitewater series runs on Sunday morning. 220 of those participated in the half marathon. 29 participated in the half marathon relay, which is two-person minimum for the relay. That's up from last year, number of 22. 5K runners, we had 260. Fit Kids Shuffle participants, 134. And Kids Corral, corralled 52 little tykes. So it was, it was a great day. Thank you to everyone that made it possible. A lot of donations to the community come as a result of that event. And just an all-around great experience. Here's some of the pictures of the happy people that were first through third place in their various elements of the day. Next up, I wanted to mention was just the 10th anniversary bash for the Whitewater Arts Alliance. That will be happening on September 30th at 7:00 PM. This is free to the public and, free and open to the public. And it will include an auction of, of various items. In the past, the Arts Alliance has provided an event or put on events similar to this, where art that's been displayed in the community is then auctioned off. A lot of very interesting art ends up hanging from some of our decorative street posts in the downtown area and along Main Street. But quoting from, directly from some of the folks that working for or on the board of the Arts Alliance, not many people know what to do with it once they buy it. So we have, and to, to help illustrate, large boxes that just multiple colors on every side, very interesting and, and appealing to look at. But where do you put that in your home? Gigantic fish, also birdhouses one year. So very neat things, but, but not always a practical, practical for putting in your, on your property once, once you, it's been auctioned off and you've purchased it. So this year, they will be doing something different. They'll have an auction and silent auction. But the types of programs they would be offering, I just wanted to mention a few because I think that they are really exceptional. It's members of this community that will be providing services. One, for example, is orchestra conducting experience, so being able to participate and conduct it. Have a day where you're conducting the orchestra. Oil painting classes, as well as just the chance to, to do some oil painting work. There, there will be classes of all kinds, character drawing, human form lessons. There's yoga, personal yoga instructions in your home. Two tickets to the Young Auditorium for Judy Collins' experience at the Young Auditorium. Many others. I'm looking through Sweet Spot Cupcake of the Month for a year. Singasaurus dinosaur package will be also provided. Thanks, that's going to be dandy. From Linda Long. Did you just want me to say that, Jimmy? Yeah, that's good. Thanks for pointing at it. All right. Singas... Songasaurus. Songasaurus. Very good. All right. So there's just a few, just a few of the items that are there. I just wanted to make note of it, making light of it too. But this, this year, I would just encourage the council, as well as the community, to come out for the event. The Arts Alliance is an asset and resource for the community. And just a lot of really good things that they're, that they're putting on this year. That information is available on their website, as well as will be on the city's website. So if you want to know more about the event, you can look there in coming days and be able to see it. Coming soon to the, I'm skipping this one. Coming soon to the, the library is going to be author Melanie McManus coming to speak on Thousand Miler Adventures Hiking the Ice Age Trail. That'll be on September, Thursday, September 21st this week. And there's a number of others, but I'm short on time. I'll make a note about the League of Women Voters, September 26th, National Voter Registration Day. So take advantage of that. And lecture series at Fairhaven. This one we're talking about in a moment, the Hunger Walk. So I'll leave that slide. And we'll just conclude to the end. So recognizing how much time I've taken, I'll just conclude. So if there are any questions otherwise, if you have anything that you want to have added, please let me know in advance, and we'd be glad to put that in our presentation.
All right. Next up, we'll move to staff reports, where we have a proclamation regarding Crop Walk. Cameron, I don't know if the national champion UW Whitewater Women's Gymnastic Team will be deferring that to...
I think we're deferring that tonight. I don't see our books here. So, but I will ask representatives from the Crop Walk to come forward. I have a proclamation to read, so I'll come up to the podium and share that. This is an annual event that has been a, something that we just want to make sure the community is aware of. And so we make it an oppor, take the opportunity to share this proclamation at council meetings. And I'll read it for, for the public and, and then present it to Mary Ann, to you on behalf of the city. Proclamation for Crop Walk, Crop Hunger Walk Day. Whereas at the end of World War II, many people wanted to share our country's abundance with European war victims and Church World Service, and crops' first purpose was to gather wheat and other crops from US farms for shipment to Europe. And whereas today, locally organized Church World Service-sponsored crop hunger walks are an important part of community life for more than 1,200 towns and cities in the United States, bringing together people of different faiths, diverse cultures, and all age groups. And whereas in the last five years alone, crop hunger walks have raised over $50 million to bring help and hope to people in need around the world and in the United States. And whereas each year, crop hunger walks help more than 2,000 local food pantries, food banks, and meal sites in the US provide food to neighbors in need, including our own Whitewater food pantry. Whereas, and whereas the annual crop hunger walk will be held on October 1st, 2017, to help our community become aware of and concerned about hunger and its causes. And whereas the crop hunger walk will raise funds to help stop hunger both locally and globally, now therefore, I, Cameron Clapper, City Manager of Whitewater, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 1st, as Crop Hunger Walk Day in Whitewater, and do urge the citizens of Whitewater to support this crop hunger walk. I'll leave that to you. And thank you very much.
We really appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk, talk to the city, basically. And we appreciate the support, the support that we get from Cameron and from the rest of the city workers, like Scott Webber-Paul, who laid out our rights, our routes. And Kristian Mickelson, who helped with publicity, and Chuck Nass and his Department of Public Works people, who help with our banner. All of these people help us a great deal. This year, we have a new banner, which you'll see on Main Street. That is courtesy of Edward Jones. The reason it's so important to raise the money is, well, our goal this year is $5,000, which we hope we will reach. With your help, we will. In, so far, in the 27 crop walks that we've had, we have raised $35,000 for the, for the, to be used here in Whitewater. And we, Whitewater has given $182,000 to help throughout the world. That means that it's been helping where there are the hurricanes, where there are earthquakes, wherever there is a need. I am Mary Ann Scott. I'm one of the co-chairs. Rick Blucher is another of our co-chair. Rick, would you like to say something now?
Little bit food for thought. We all know that in the world right now, we've got a lot of disasters. We don't think that a disaster can happen to us. But just think of a tornado would come through Whitewater tomorrow. And you're in the path of that tornado, and you lose everything. You have nothing. You have to go to the food pantry. The Crop Walk helps with that, because they donate to the food pantry. A certain percentage of it stays here. But just think about that. How many people in this world, in these, all these disasters that we're having right now, were not expected, and they're homeless and shelterless, and they need help. So I ask everybody, please think about it. And if you can, donate something to Crop Walk. I know there's many, many, many different things that we can donate to in this day and age. But the Crop Walk is something that really helps our community. And it can happen any day that we have a disaster here in Whitewater, and we'd be happy to have the help through the food pantry. Thank you very much for all your support.
Next up, we have hearing of citizen comments. No formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised become part of a future agenda. Participants are allowed any three-minute speaking period. And although items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we definitely allow for public input. So if there's anybody, just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
James Allen, 215 East Clay Street. Recently, parking meters were taken off of Prairie Street, leaving it very difficult for not only faculty and staff, but anybody visiting our campus to park. Day parking passes have gone from $1 to $5. Penalties have gone from $5 to $25. And recently, I was told that even though you are legally able to park in a law con lot, including the one on North Prairie, next to the tennis court across from Staren Park, people there are being ticketed as well. These are city-owned streets. The city pays for the street, paves the street, plows the street, and maintains the street. So for the university to take the market, the meters off of that street and collect their annual sticker, which is almost $200 a year, puts a burden on all those people who use that parking. It's practically double taxation. We shouldn't have to pay for our own streets, which belong to us, and then have to pay a second time to the university. And I hope there's others in the room who feel the same way, who will come up and share their thoughts.
Stephanie Gadel, 1036 West Hillview Drive. Want to speak to a similar point. It's something I've noticed on council, actually frequently, is that things that I've dealt with a few years ago tend to come back around. And the meters on Prince and Prairie, to begin with, I had an issue with. I fought very hard against the MOU. God, I was an undergraduate student. I don't even remember what year it was. I think it was 2012. So it was some time ago. At that time, we were under the impression meters would be placed there. For those of you who are not aware, in the state of Wisconsin, disabled members of the community who have handicap parking do not have to pay for parking meters, as long as they do not have a meter under 30 minutes. They also do not have to regard parking limits, as long as those limits are in excess of 30 minutes. I am a disabled member of this community. I have handicap parking. I have Ehlers-Danlos syndrome. My mobility has dramatically declined in the last year. Most of you probably have seen that. Unfortunately, for me, that means that because the university has transitioned that parking from meters to now requiring a permit, they've also indicated that even handicapped students are required to have a permit even to be parked on those streets, which are public streets. And I would say, you know, in addition to the issue that Jim has put so nicely, that these are city streets and these are streets that we are paying for, there are additional members of this community who come to our campus to visit, who, who may not feel that they wish to be parked in, in a student parking lot, who may be here just to visit, who now feel that they also cannot park on streets that belong to the city as well. This is an issue that I'm hoping to discuss further later this evening. But I think it is an issue that has been overlooked, as these parking regulations have been changed. And I hope that the university will consider that as they continue to write tickets to students here on campus and to visitors as well.
Stephanie, is there anybody else wishing to speak on this?
Sorry, a little short. Heather Kincaid, or Miller, actually. I'm just married. My apologies. 329 East Crevasse Street. I am part of this city. I also work for the university. And like these two up here, I also have an issue with the parking on the road and having to pay. I now, I do not work over the summer. We have laid off. We are laid off over the summer. We do get unemployment. That means I get no paycheck. I came in in September, and they were like, it is no longer free parking for you. You have to go pay for a parking pass. I haven't had a check yet. I don't have, the money that I saved up was to get me through the summer. So I had to spend money that I didn't have on this parking pass that nobody told me. Maybe it was on the website, and I apologize for not going there. I should have had a mailer. I'm one of the old people. I'm sorry. But I just don't understand how we can now be charged. When I live in the city, and I used to be able to park in city parking, now all of a sudden, I'm paying the university. My family, like you brought up a point, my family lives in Ohio. They come and visit me every once in a while. I work at the university. They would like to come eat lunch with me. But now they can't park anywhere around campus, and they have to walk or pay $5 or whatever the parking is now for them to come. I don't believe it's fair to the city people that work here. If we have to pay for it, can we at least have a bereavement or something in how much we pay? Or maybe it doesn't get taxed. So we have to pay for parking. I don't believe we should have to. We plow, you know, I pay for the plowing, and I pay for the streets. I don't understand why I also have to pay for the parking. Thank you.
Jimmy Schulgit, 329 North Tritt Street, number 19. I too think that the recent changes in the parking regulations and rules have been unreasonable, haven't encouraged harmony between the university and the city. But I have a little insight as to why the university has made these changes recently. I was at a student senate meeting yesterday, and the university parking system currently has a $300,000 interest payment that's due very shortly. And there are many millions of dollars in debt. So from the impression that we got at the student senate meeting, it's been, you know, woefully mismanaged over the past several years. And that's the reason why they're trying to, you know, bring more money in. I'm not saying this is an excuse or a good reason why. I don't think it is. I'm just saying this is why the university is doing it.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
We don't want to get into a debate.
Parking on this campus has always been a cash cow. Last I checked, I think they made over $3 million a year in parking, although lately to try to find those numbers has been nearly impossible. Everybody's been silenced. If they're in a shortfall, maybe it's because they just had to pay $1 million for their lease payment on what we used to call the century building. So shortfall or not, you know, I think, I think that's probably the reason. There used to be a free lot right up here by the Ambrose Medical Center. It held a lot of cars. That's been taken away. The fines have been increased. The late fees have been increased. After so many days, they will come take the plates off of your car. They will tow your car. It's just kind of gotten out of hand, as far as I'm concerned. And somebody needs to put the brakes on it. The university and the city have an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. It started back in 2000, I believe, five, five or 12, when we reconstructed Prairie Street. At that time, the university graciously agreed to pay for half of the reconstruction of Prairie Street, or excuse me, Prince Street, because they are the customer on half of Prince Street. Well, that part of the agreement's done. It's over with. It's paid for. All the city gets out of that now is a payment of $40,000 a year, while the university keeps the rest, plus a 10% administration fee. The agreement is not breakable by either the city or the university. It must agree to by both. But I contend that it has been broken, because it was never discussed when it was renewed, that Prairie Street would be added to the, to the mix. Therefore, I think the city council tonight, in closed session, when we debate this, hopefully we can take more action on it. But if there's anybody else here willing to speak about it, we need to hear how you feel about it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lisa Hemfner. I am a resident and a faculty member at the university. And I didn't come here to speak about this. I came here for, because my student is going to be doing something later, and I wanted to support him. But upon hearing this issue, I would like to add some insight to this. I regularly, I don't buy a perm, a parking permit. I walk to school. But there are days when it rains really hard, and I count on being able to park my car at a metered parking space close to my office. But there's, that's one thing. That's how it affects me. But another way that this parking issue I see can actually come back to be very negative for the university, is that when I invite guest speakers to my classes, I tell them that they can park in the metered parking places close to campus. It's closer than the visitor parking lot. It's easier for them to get to my office, so that then I can walk with them to my class. So it also presents this, this problem, I think, in, in image to people who might come to visit our campus when they're put at a dis, they're made to park real far from where the, that is that they're going to. So I, I really think that other, there's other matters that should be taken into consideration. I think there's other people, other faculty members that live in town that choose not to get a parking permit. But we do need to use spaces sometimes. So just another side to it.
I'm Larry Katchel, 457 South Buckingham Boulevard. I find it somewhat ironic that I don't see anybody from the university here tonight, unless these two gentlemen are. I don't see the chancellor, or a representative, or a, or the community liaison. And this issue is apparently, I don't know, but if they're not here, university is not giving this issue much thought, as the importance to the community. giving this issue much thought as the importance to the community. And I think that's a shame. They expect the community to give to the university and they're not willing to even lend an ear when the community has a concern. That raises a much bigger issue.
All right, is there anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Resolutions are one, recognizing the value of immigrants to our community. Mr. Shulget?
So I just thought in light of the national climate that the statement that I prepared well represents the values of our community. So should I just read it off?
Gonna make a motion.
Okay. So I motion to approve R one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Do you want to kind of go over your resolution and then we can open it up for debate and public comment if there is any?
Be it resolved that the city of Whitewater recognizes the value of all, the value that all immigrants bring to our community regardless of their legal status. We especially recognize immigrant students at the University of Wisconsin-Whitewater who seek to better themselves, their family, their communities, and our country through their educational pursuits.
Any other background you want to give on this or we can open it up to the rest of the council and then open it up to the public if there's any?
Well, I know several students had expressed, you know, just concern about how things are now and I thought that this would be, you know, a nice thing to show them that the city values what they're doing here at the university.
Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak on this item? If you want to come up to the podium and then...
It's actually kind of nice speaking at one of these. It's my first time, so, but...
You just want to state your name.
Oh, Anna Thompson, and where I'm from. Okay. So I live on Christie Lane in Whitewater, Wisconsin. And so I've had a couple of my friends actually tell me how concerned they are of recent DACA, things happening in politics and stuff and the debate against that and they don't feel safe here anymore. And it just, it just makes me sad because like I, it wouldn't harm me, but it would harm them, harm their friends. And I was just wondering if something, I know they couldn't, just something more affirming for action could be done for this, like talk, making sure that the actual, our representatives are going to be on our side, you know, voting for them instead of against them and that. They know that action's being taken because it's nice to say that we agree with you, we're happy that you're here and stuff, but if there's no, no protection for them being here, it's kind of like a lofty thing to say, like light and fluffy. So that's all I had to say.
Okay, my name is Jesse Black. I'm the director of intergovernmental affairs for Whitewater Student Government. First and foremost, I'm a citizen of Whitewater. Secondly, I'm a student for the university here. And lastly, I'm the director of intergovernmental affairs. The current legislation involving DACA, I think it brings up a big issue with the university, I think, because like Ms. Thompson said, students just don't feel safe here anymore. And I'm also part of an organization called Dreams College and Colleagues and they just feel like the university is kind of trying to leave them high and dry. So, but in light of that, and I know that they have like six months or whatever to get the legislation passed, so nothing happens, but I think the university and the city should definitely back the Dreamers here because we all want inclusivity on the university. We all want diversity and we all want the children that have already been here to receive education just as equally as you and me would. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, is there anybody else wishing to speak in the public? All right, we'll turn it back over to council so the motion is to approve the resolution. Is there any other discussion?
I guess, I just, is this just a statement? I mean, it doesn't really do anything, right? It's really just, we're here? I don't, I guess I'm just curious about the nature of the purpose of this statement. I mean, I guess I noticed that in here we say regardless of their legal status, but we truly can't make any sort of statement regarding the enforcement of federal law within our community. I mean, this is not written in any effort that makes any sort of indication that we intend to do that or become any sort of sanctuary city of sorts, I don't think. I mean, is this truly just a statement of affirmation?
I mean, you know, I just didn't introduce this on a whim. I brought this up because several students and friends and people who I know on campus did express their concerns, you know, my constituents. And I thought that even just from, I suppose, an emotional perspective, knowing that the community supports them would be a good thing. So that was why I introduced it.
So yes.
I think the intent is there and I'm all for it.
Yeah, I have no issue with that. I just wanted to clarify.
But I would like to see this go back to the city attorney and see what more teeth we can add to it.
Okay.
You know, there are other island cities that help protect its citizens and maybe we can become one of them. But I appreciate the efforts. I'm fully behind it.
Yeah, I think we have some wonderful students here and I think there's, you know, I don't have an issue with it. I just think here in front of us is not really anything in particular. I'm just curious what exactly we intend to do with it.
Is there any other discussion by council? Mr. Binney?
I also appreciate Mr. Shulget's efforts on this. I wish it was possible for us to practically do more than this as has been indicated. We're talking about a federal law and there's not a lot that a city can do other than consider becoming a sanctuary city. And frankly, some of us have had reservation about even considering that possibility given the thought that that might sort of put a target on us for enforcement. I think there's that real possibility that if you make yourself more prominent in your support of individuals, it could potentially lead to some unexpected consequences.
I think Cameron, I don't know if that committee is still meeting, but there was that Latino relations committee that you were on that I think would also...
Yeah, I had heard there was a kind of a group that had kind of spun off from that, but they've scheduled their meetings exactly when the city council meets.
Regarding the actual Hispanic task force, I have to check with our, the chair of that body, Mr. Winship, about the status of some of the, or the status of the meeting schedule. But we, we've had multiple conversations and tried to communicate to the, especially the Hispanic community regarding the desire that I think is shared by all here, that we are concerned about the members of our community and their families. And that's paramount. We're not a state or federal agency or representative directly of a state or federal laws. We have our own, as a creature of the state, we are our own municipality and as that, we don't have any desire to be playing the part of immigration or judging who can stay and who can go or doing anything else that would make anyone, just as this says, regardless of legal status, people with the right paperwork or not feel uncomfortable or in danger in our community. So that's, we've shared that message through a number of meetings and avenues and I could, I wasn't prepared with most up to date on where things are with the group, but yeah, that's what I can say is, so we've never officially done anything or taken any formal action as a group in a similar way, but I think the sentiment is genuine and consistent with that body, with that group.
Is there any further discussion? All right, the motion is to approve the resolution. Roll call, Michelle.
Grady?
Aye.
Binny?
Aye.
Gadle?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
Shulget?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Move on to ordinance's first reading. Ordinance approving change in district zoning map for property located at seven thirteen West High Street owned by two fifty-four Prairie LLC Marcus Tinter to impose R two A residential overlay zoning district.
I could take this. This ordinance, you've seen many of these before. It involves an overlay district in the R two A area. And the primary purpose of the overlay district is to allow greater density in an area that normally would have maximum of three unrelated individuals allowed to live in a particular residential unit. This ordinance amendment would allow it to go up to five. That would be in conjunction with a conditional use which has to be granted and has been granted conditionally by the plan commission. Plan commission did vote unanimously to agree or to allow the five unrelated and recommended unanimously, as I recall, recommended that the council pass the R two A zoning for this property.
All right, is there any action on this by council?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, it's moved in second. Is there any public comment?
This is already in a, an area already being zoned for higher density?
It's in the R two A overlay district, so it is, this zoning, as you will recall, this is a hybrid zoning. It is allowed in this district, but anytime it's done has to go through plan commission and the council for approval.
I'm going to have a hard time placing High Street.
No, I found it on the map.
Is it the alley?
Yeah. Here are all the center and pack, right? Guess what? When I pulled it up, I just pulled it up on my phone because I couldn't quite...
Are the other homes around it single family?
I'm not sure. I see Chris Munz-Pritchard may...
The R two A overlay is single family and duplex. It's just increasing the density around that. I believe all the houses are single family, so this is allowing five unrelated instead of the regular three. And it's in the overlay district. So every time that somebody wants to apply for it, they have to come in and have a zoning map amendment and a conditional use and they have to meet the conditions and then it has to change the zoning map, so.
There were requirements for parking. Have those all been met?
Yes. There are two in the garage, two outside of the garage, and there's going to be one slab put in the back. He originally asked for three slabs in the back. We reduced it to one. That'll have the five parking stall requirements.
I mean, unrelated, I mean, either way, they mean the requirements, but I'm just curious, do we know if it's owner occupied or rental?
Currently, it is...
I think that was more what the question was.
Yeah. Currently is owner occupied. I don't even think it went on the market. It was being sold to the family friend, which is the applicant, and he's...
Traditionally, when we do these overlays, it is for higher density rental properties.
Yes.
And this is the area that's designated for that?
No, yeah. And there is quite a bit over there that's already like that.
I know. I just have a hard time, even though we've designated areas, I have a hard time destroying our single family neighborhoods for other housing.
This was a very intense plan board discussion on this house.
I'll be voting in the affirmative.
Any further discussion?
I think one of the things that came up at plan board, there is a lot of new housing units being built for students coming up in the next year or so. And some of the members of the plan board were expressing concerns that we're almost to the point where too many of these houses way off of campus are getting converted and then two years from now, when all these new complexes come online, there may be an overabundance of housing actually. And at some point, I think we ought to look at curtailing the conversion of houses to a certain extent for some period of time unless it truly is needed.
So that came up at plan board as well. In my budget, you're going to see that we're looking at, we're going to try to look at like doing a housing assessment study. It'll most likely start at the end of two thousand eighteen and then go into two thousand nineteen. They're rather complex from everything that I researched, but it's not just going to look at housing for student. It also is going to look at single family housing, price points. It's going to go through that, those steps, so.
Just that before that period, we may end up getting to the point where we have an overabundance of housing and I'd hate to see some of the rental units that have already been converted have a difficult time finding renters and then end up run down, et cetera. That's all I'm saying is we got to keep our eye on that.
I would, I mean, I guess I understand. I know that's an ongoing discussion. I think it's really too early and this is not the appropriate time to have that discussion. I'm not as hesitant when it comes to something like this because we're not tearing down the house and replacing it with an eighty-unit apartment building. It's still going to be a single family home. It's not as though it couldn't later be rented to someone who was not a student. And I think that is why I have less hesitance in this instance, even though that is an ongoing discussion. There's not, this is not truly a conversion where we're really losing something. It's just kind of changing the house.
True, but once it changes to student housing, it's hard to change back because now the garage is the bedroom, the living room is two bedrooms, you know, it does make it more difficult. Are you, do you have a copy of the new housing study that just came out that the CDA did?
They, I do. And what they did with that particular study, and I think that, I shouldn't talk to this because there are CDA members in the audience that can talk to it, but I think they looked at price value and not necessarily what we need overall. And so that's really what we need to look at and I can, I don't feel comfortable talking about it because we've got CDA members here. But this particular property, they're not converting anything. It's all existing. And I know that that ended up being a point of contention last year, the year before because we had people converting, you know, dining rooms and whatnot. And we came up with a calculation on how to kind of give the tipping point on when we say yes or no. I ran that through the calculations. This was an interesting one because the assessor webpage didn't look like the basement had any finished area. So I had to have actually our, our building inspector go over, review. It was finished most likely when the house was built and so, and it's actually in my planner's report.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Thanks, Chris.
All right, anybody in the public? All right, motion is to approve. Roll call, Michelle.
Binny?
Aye.
Gadle? Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
Shulget?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Move on to O two, ordinance's second reading, amending chapter seventeen point oh eight point oh four oh, parent nine, and seventeen oh eight point oh four oh, parent ten of the Whitewater Municipal Code.
I could introduce it and then if there's further discussion, I think that the, this ordinance amendment has changed somewhat, but generally speaking, the intent is to clarify the duties between the Burge Fountain Committee and the Landmarks Commission concerning the Burge Fountain. And specifically, the first ordinance amendment of seventeen point, which is creating seventeen point oh eight point oh four oh, parents nine, makes it clear that the Burge Fountain Committee will have the primary responsibility for the care of the Burge Fountain. However, the Landmarks Commission does have a function, that being if there's any major changes that alter the char, significantly alter the character of the Burge Fountain, the... the city council must approve it after it receives the advice and recommendation of the Landmarks Commission, which is required within 60 days of the written notice of the proposed renovation change or improvement. Secondly, a new subsection 10 is created, which also gives a new function for the Landmarks Commission, and that is if the Landmarks Commission has concerns related to the maintenance of any publicly owned landmark, then it is required to notify the Director of Neighborhood Services of the concern, and if the Landmarks Commission has concerns related to City of Whitewater-owned landmarks, then it would notify the Park and Recreation Director, and then either of those directors would have 60 days to develop a plan of action in response to the concerns reported by the Landmarks Commission. So, to summarize it, it's an attempt to clarify the role of the Landmarks Commission and the Burge Fountain Committee as it relates to the Burge Fountain, because there had been some conflicts and some problems as it related to somewhat dual jurisdiction, which I think this attempts to take care of, and I think it does.
I think the one change, because this is a second reading, so we saw this in our last meeting, the one change that was requested when the Landmarks Commission didn't review it at their last meeting, is in section nine, it was 30 days that they had to report to council. That was changed to 60 at their request, because they wanted to make it similar to what the DPW, or the Department of Neighborhood Services and Park and Rec Directors had, in terms of their response time. So that's the change that's different from when we adopted the first reading at our last meeting. And the, and the Landmarks Commission was in agreement with the content.
And because I've long chaired, or long been on the Burge Fountain Committee since its inception, and I wasn't at the last meeting, I think I would like to make a friendly amendment at the section 10, that if there are any privately owned landmarks, it shall be notified by the, I think it should go to the DPW Director, not, not to other full bodies and boards. You've got Park and Rec Director here, and you've got Neighborhood Services Director here. Let's send it to one person, let's make it the DPW Director, who's in charge of its maintenance, and clean it up.
But the, the DPW Director isn't responsible for privately owned homes, that would be more the...
Did that resolution pass where the, and I apologize if I wasn't there, that the Landmarks Commission can no longer make its own recommendations on its own landmarks, on city-owned property?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So I think, yeah, the distinction that, that Chris was making is, and we talked about this at our last meeting, was publicly owned, which would be school district or other non-city governmental entities. Or privately owned landmarks, so private property owners, would be under Neighborhood Services, because that's where all the code enforcement occurs already. And then the Landmarks Committee, for city-owned property, it was the Public Works, or, not Public Works, but Park and Rec. There was some debate about DPW as well, just because there is some crossover with that position in terms of some of our buildings and...
Yeah, you've got two committees, though, who are already in contention.
But these aren't committees, these are people.
Just, let's not involve two more, let's send it to the DPW Director.
But these aren't committees, they're sending it to the Neighborhood Services Director, and they're sending it to the Park and Rec Director, not the Park and Rec...
Who work for committees.
Dave, can I, I can't see the council president, raise my hand. That was, I think, Jim, that was thought about, and I, I looked at this long and hard, and when we talk about private property, it really, it is nice to have it go to one person. When we talk about private property, though, the ultimate responsibility does rest with the Neighborhood Services Director. When we talk about parks, even though the city forester and supervisor over park maintenance is a public works superintendent, the parks themselves and what's going on in them really ties more to Park and Rec Director. So that is, that's why there are the two in there. If you wanna, if you wanna designate it differently, you could say, I would prefer, rather than just directly DPW Director, send it to me, and I'll have a policy, I'll procedure in the office that'll automatically kick to the right person. I mean, we could do that, too, to clarify the ordinance, but I don't wanna give it directly to Public Works Director if it's, it's not in their realm of responsibilities, that's my, that was my concern.
I'd be amenable to that, that change, that amendment.
So you're saying for both sorts, I shall notify the Director of Neighborhood Services, change it to City Manager, and where it's Parks and Rec?
You're not talking about for privately owned, are you?
No.
Just talking publicly, municipally owned, correct?
Publicly.
Was your suggestion?
Publicly, yes, clarifying, yeah.
Well, not to get confused, you're publicly owned in this instance is also defined as other governmental entities, so we're really talking about city-owned.
Yeah.
Whitewater-owned.
Thank you for that clarification, yeah.
Are you saying everything goes to one person, Cameron?
No, that's not the way that I'm understanding it. I'm understanding that the publicly owned, except City of Whitewater, or privately owned, would go to Director of Neighborhood Services, it's only City of Whitewater-owned that would go to Cameron, correct?
Well, I think, when, in Jim and my conversation, it's, it would all go to me, or designee. But if there's a concern with that regarding the private property, I'm reading through it again here, to think about it.
So Jimmy, you're saying, just make it the City Manager and let him designate?
Yep, just have him, let me know, and it automatically kicks a procedure.
And that's, that's the amendment I wish to make.
All right, well, there was no motion originally. So is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And then I would like to make the amendment that both public and private go to Cameron.
Second.
All right. So is there any debate on the motion, the amendment, to change the notification to the City Manager as opposed to Neighborhood Services Director, or Park and Rec Director?
I'd be agreeable with respect to Whitewater-owned, but I don't see the logic for going outside of our normal code enforcement policy for privately owned, so I would oppose that amendment.
Are you saying City Manager or their designee?
I thought you were saying that Cameron would have a policy in place, so ultimately, Cameron would just kick it to Neighborhood Services, if it was something she or someone else would handle.
But give some flexibility.
Yeah.
All right, is there any other?
So it would just go to Cameron, and then you would decide who would take care of it, instead of it going directly to the Neighborhood Services?
Correctly, correct. At this point, that, to, to make this something that's amenable for, agreeable for everyone, it would be one way to clear it up, if there's a concern about too many positions being in this text, simply state the City Manager or designee, and I will have, internal to the office will simply set up a policy, so when those, when emails or phone contacts like that come, they go to who would be appropriate. In this case, I would, as long as we have a Neighborhood Services Director, which I don't see changing anytime soon, we would, I would send any private-related items to the, now she's laughing at me for saying it that way, but I would send them to the Neighborhood Services Director, and then if it is something related to a publicly owned space, the first person I would contact is Park and Rec Director. But inevitably, based on where our offices are all located, too, I mean, the Public Works Director's gonna know about it. So, I can take care of it that way inside, and just spell it out in a checklist or procedure and get it done.
It should still get to where it needs to go. The added benefit is, things get reorganized, titles change, that allows us to keep it out of ordinance and have the City Manager basically manage that. It's City Manager or designee.
That is what I would, that's what I was saying earlier, yes.
It completely cleans it up.
All right, is there any further discussion on the amendment? All right, roll call, Michelle.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
Shulget?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Benny?
Aye.
Gadel?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, so now we're on the main motion to approve the ordinance as amended. Is there any further discussion?
So moved.
No, that's all right. Is anybody in the public wishing to speak?
Excuse my ignorance, in your attempt to clarify this matter, you have totally muddied the water. What is the effect, what is the effect of this change on existing private ownership of land that Landmark Commission could designate as a landmark against the private landowner's wishes?
This does not address that at all.
None whatsoever?
Yeah, this is about the Burge Fountain only, there's some future considerations.
Okay, what did you do regarding the private side of this and the change in the amendment? Just to clarify that in...
Basically, all it's saying is, if the Landmarks Commission has a problem with the way a private homeowner that owns a landmark...
It already has a landmark, okay.
Yeah, already has one, is maintaining it, who to complain to?
Okay, and what does it say now, or does it not say anything?
Doesn't say anything.
Okay, all right, good enough.
But the other one's forthcoming. Lastly, if I may, I have a question that I brought up before, and I know that our city attorney is extremely busy, but when the Landmarks Commission deemed Walton Oaks Park a historic landmark, it's done so after that land was already deemed parkland. And in the state of Wisconsin, once parkland is deemed parkland, it's extremely difficult to change that. Wally, not to put you on the spot, but have you had any time to look into that?
I, I haven't researched it, I, I don't think that it would, my, my quick opinion would be that designating it a landmark does not change the fact that it is parkland, and I don't think it would, it would be prohibited or affect the, have a legal effect of somehow changing its park designation. You're right that certainly sale of parkland is a big deal, and goes through a lot of processes before it happens, but I don't think designating it as a landmark would require any special, special administrative or other action, but I will, I will research it for you, Jim, or for the council.
Thanks, I haven't had time either, but I've heard from a couple different constituents who think that it's not possible, so.
I'll check.
We should look into it. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? And this will not be our last Landmarks discussion in the next couple of meetings, so. This is one of the parts, first part of a series, so if you like landmarks, we'll definitely have some more for you later. All right, any other discussion? All right, motion is to approve the ordinance as amended, roll call, Michelle.
Gadel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
Shulget?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Benny?
Aye.
And just for the record, the, my opinion, this would be considered a second reading, and so, this would be the final time, and it is enacted based on this action, is, does the council understand that and agree with that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, next up, we'll move on to our considerations. First up is C1, discussion regarding a request for renewal of Polco agreement.
Yes, thank you, I can speak to this, and I know Kristen is also here to, and can help answer questions, some questions if necessary. She's had a lot of conversations with our representatives from Polco, but this is essentially our contract with Polco. For, we, we had one for the initial year, and that one has expired, and this one would, is a renewal then, and would go until 2018. I did wanna mention, the one, the draft you have in your packet has a different date in the second paragraph on the first page of the agreement, says this agreement beginning in the signing date, on the signing date, and provides for services over the period, and then it has two spaces that are fill-in, and it was filled with August 16th. That has been changed to the 19th, so maybe just for purposes of clarity, if, if the council wishes to approve this agreement, make that, make note of that change, so that it's on the clerk's record as well. But this is for essentially the Polco service and a number of components of that service that I'm not as equipped to speak about at the moment, but you'll see on the back, with the last page of the agreement, it goes over the planned features. Essentially, we found this to be a very useful tool, I think most of the council members have as well. This is renewing an existing contract, and the cost would be $3,000.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second to approve the agreement, is there any further discussion? Ms. Gadel?
I know that, you know, the $3,000 is not a lot of money, and I actually think that Polco in itself is really great, and I would love to keep using it, but my very blunt, and for lack of a better adjective, very Stephanie opinion of this, is that if we continue using Polco in the fashion we are currently using it, that $3,000 is really not worth it. We're not asking questions that are even remotely controversial, we are not asking questions that are really beneficial to the council. We have not found out if council members can even access this data on their own. I really was under the impression, when we first signed up for this, that this was something that was going to be used regularly for things that were on our agendas, things that people were fired up about. So far, I've learned how many people grew up here, how much they like green space. I, I just don't really feel like, right now, we're really using it for what it was marketed to us for, which was a tool we could use to help us make decisions. And I don't really feel, you know, I, I hear you say, I think council members have found it useful, but I have yet to go on there and say, oh, I wonder what people think, before I go to council on Tuesday and make a decision. And that's how it was marketed to me. And, and I, I think it's great, and I think it could be that, but that's not what it's being used for right now. And we have all the tools at our disposal to use it for that, and so I'm comfortable spending the $3,000, but only if we're going to actually commit to really using it for something that actually gives us information that we need or want, because right now, I don't really feel like the information we're getting is influencing our decision-making. And I think there are other ways we could spend $3,000 to influence our decision-making. I want, you know, I think this company has been good, they're, they're part of the Whitewater community, I think they've taken space, or at least virtual space in our innovation center, I think that's awesome, but I really think that if we're going to use this and we're going to spend the money, we need to actually use it. I, I, I don't mean to be the person who's raining on the parade, but I just, this is, the information we're getting is not really helpful, and that's not the fault of Polco, but it's time that we actually sink our teeth into this and use it for something if we're gonna keep spending money on it.
I think you're raining on the parade, and they are local, and we do want to support them, but just get rid of the fluff and get down to it.
We've got it, we've got people using it, I want more people using it, I think if they hear, oh, the city wants to hear about whatever thing we're fired up about, I think that's when they're gonna tell their friends to go answer the question. They're not gonna tell their friends, hey, the city asked how many of us grew up here, that's not the thing they're gonna talk about, so.
I, I'll just interject now, while someone's taking a breath, to say, that's, your concerns are well-taken, we're already on that course. So, when we, we've laid out questions, a number of questions, and we've tried to acclimate community to use of the software. Much of the restriction and delay in terms of what we ask and what we put out has more to do with this body and the approval process than it does with what we want to send out to the community. So if there's, I was already, I had a conversation with Kristen, I think it was last week now, but that we're, we're, we've asked you and shown you what, what questions we had laid out based on, on an effort to try to put something out there to start to use the system, but the idea of utilizing it for actual meetings is right up the alley of what we would like to be doing. So, I, I can take that direction, and as, take that as direction, and just apply it to the course we were already taking, which would be that people actually get to start adding input. It's actually one of my own performance goals in the budget document, related to communication with the community, is utilizing that system. We, we deferred or opted out of doing focus group kinds of forum meetings, partly because we don't have staff to do that on a regular basis with different sections of the community, but also because we want to utilize this tool. So, that's where we're headed. I understand the frustration that folks are feeling maybe with some of the questions, but we've, we've meant to try to start it off easy. We started with a controversial question and got something of a, of a chewing, chewing on by, by, I think, the response from the public, and then the concern from the council when we initiated use of, of the system. So, we don't have a problem with putting out information about agenda items or about about agenda items or about controversial items, and I'd be happy to do that tomorrow.
And I would echo some of the concern. I mean, and that's through no fault of city staff.
No.
I mean, one of it we were trying to do was get it up and running. It is a little bit slower implementation than I would have hoped. Obviously, we're a smaller community. We have a different character makeup than some of the other Polco communities that have already launched, but I hope in the next year, we can really kick-start it and making a decision about what do we want on there, because some communities put everything that's on the agenda on Polco, but we just have to get a level of engagement, as we've seen with our board and commissions and some of the other things. It is tough to get citizens engaged, even at... I was talking to Mr. Shulger before. Even at the student government level, it sounds like getting participation at that level is also difficult. So, I think we have some pieces in place, but if by next year at this time, we're still in the same boat, maybe we really need to look at, is this the right tool for us? Because I agree. If it's not working the way we intended it or wanted it to, we should probably reevaluate and maybe use that money for something else.
I was going to reiterate what everybody else said, too. When Kristen gave us a list of questions, they started out very innocuously, and just, as you said, just engage people and realize that platform's there, but as you go down the list, there are certainly some provocative questions that are come out, and I think that's where we think we want to go, the hard ones, the ones that we're having problems making decisions with.
I have a question, maybe just something to reflect about, but I know, you know, at a cost of $0, you know, Facebook has, you know, you can do polls there. I'm not familiar with how well they work, but if we're just using it for polls, unless, you know, anybody or a lot of people who use Polco don't have Facebook, and I can see Facebook as being, you know, an alternative in the future, potentially.
Just to clarify, Jimmy, I mean, you weren't here for the original thing, but this is like, it has features that allow to, like, use voter registration, you know, down districts, that kind of stuff, so it is a little bit... It's not just a simple poll. So, there is more of a purpose to it than just that.
Okay.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Motion is to approve the agreement. Roll call Michelle.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
Shulger?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Benny?
Aye.
Gadel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye. Alright, motion passed. Move on to C2, presentation of water system study by Staran Associates. Mr. Fisher or Cameron, who do you want?
Since this is the nearest microphone, we have Justin, and I'm... Justin is... Bill's Kemper, is that...
Bill's Kemper.
Bill's Kemper, thank you. Justin Bill's Kemper, and then Mark Fisher from Staran Associates, our contracted engineering firm, conducted a study for us on our water system, working closely with Rick Lane, who's here, and a thank you to Rick for his efforts. He did a lot of digging and research and getting the material to Staran. So, I will be quiet now and turn the time over to Mark and Justin to give us an update.
Thanks, Cameron, and I want to reiterate to thank Rick for all of his help on doing the study and collecting all the data. It was very helpful and beneficial. So, thanks for letting us be here tonight to talk about the water study that we recently completed. We worked on this study for about the last year or so, and the last time that the city had a water study completed of this, you know, comprehensive water study like this was before LS Power came, so that was over 20 years ago. So, it's a good thing to review that occasionally. I will go through some introductory slides here, and then I'll turn it over to Justin, who will go through the bulk of the study. The council has the slides in front of them as well. I want to go through the project scope that we worked through here. First of all, we thought it was helpful to have a summary of the components of the water system, so you'll see a slide on that here tonight. To create and calibrate a water system model, why would we want a water system model? Well, we use the model when developers come to us and ask for an estimate of fire flows for a certain neighborhood. We might use a model for determining what water main size we should put in on a certain street in town, so it is a very useful tool. Another scope item was to estimate current and future water system demands. Again, that's something that hasn't been reviewed for a couple of decades. Evaluate current and future storage capacity. So, when we talk about storage in a water system, that's the water in our water tower or in our reservoir. To model the current water system and future growth areas, so to use that computer model that we built and look at the future demands on the system and see how the system can serve those demands going forward. To complete a preliminary tank siting study, so where should the next elevated tank, or where should the next water tower be in the city? That's something that we looked at, and you'll hear more about that tonight. And then to provide recommendations and cost estimates for any improvements that are recommended. So, as far as the components of the water system, I thought it would be good to bring everyone up to speed on what the system consists of. We have five wells in the system that are active right now. We have a total pumping capacity of 6.7 million gallons per day, and we have what's called a firm pumping capacity of 5 million gallons a day, and firm capacity means what we can pump with our largest unit out of service. So, it's kind of looking at a, kind of a worst-case scenario. We have two elevated tanks in the system, one here in Staran Park, of course, that was constructed back in 1889. As Cameron mentioned, it's an old, very old facility, and another water tower on Crevasse Street on the east side of town. It has 500,000 gallons. So, we have approximately 700,000 gallons of water in elevated storage. We also have one ground-level reservoir at the Staran Park Water Plant that was also built back in 1889, and we have 860,000 gallons in that reservoir. The system consists of 56 miles of water main, ranging in size from 2 to 16-inch diameter. DNR, right now, has a minimum water main size of six inches. Just want to indicate that about 93% of the system is larger than... Six inches are larger, so we're in pretty good shape there. We see a lot of communities that have a lot of small mains, but Whitewater is doing pretty well in that regard. And the final thing I wanted to mention is that we have a pressure range in the city here of 40 to 75 PSI, which is well within the DNR code range of 35 to 100 PSI. And Justin will talk about some of the areas that we're aware of that were a little bit on that low end, but still acceptable in the DNR's eyes. So, with that, Justin, we'll come on up and go through some of the evaluation that we did as part of the study.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone can hear me okay back there?
Great. So, I'm not going to lie. I came to Mark here after first putting a draft of the presentation together, 20, 25, 30 slides, and he looks at me and kind of shakes his head. He's like, "You gotta cut this thing down a little bit." And I'm passionate about the subject, and I really would love to talk more about this, but I would also like to get you home at a reasonable time here tonight, so I will try and keep it as brief as I can. One thing I want to talk about here is the historical and projected annual demands. This kind of serves as the baseline of the entire report. So, you can see here, so we obtained some historical records from PSC documents. PSC is the Public Service Commission. Every water utility is required to file a WEGS report, the Water, Electric, Gas Sewer Report. In that, they have all this information right here. It tells you what your average day pumpage was dating back, you know, we're going 20 years. It also tells you what the maximum pumping day was, and I can tell you that these are all, almost all LS Power here. And PSC documents have all other sorts of information in there. It tells you what your sales-to-pumpage ratios were. It tells you what your max-to-average-day ratio was. It tells you what all the sales were per customer class, industrial, commercial, residential, so on, so forth. Just a ton of information that we can gather to use in this planning document. And we also got some population estimates that were obtained from the, I think it was the draft city comprehensive plan from Chris. The comp plan had two different projections. One was a straight line, one was a compounded. We were instructed to go with the compounded growth that seemed to follow and kind of track what the population was doing for the past 15, 20 years. There was also some DOA projections, but they were way off, probably very unrealistic, so we chose, the city chose to maintain their comp plan estimate for populations. And I apologize, it looks good on my screen on the computer, but sometimes it does this here. And then, so to calculate a future average day, you then take the population projection from that particular year, and then you multiply it by a per capita demand, which is, again, kind of based off of your population. So, that's how we kind of obtained a future average day and then multiply by an assumed max-to-average-day ratio, in this case, a factor of two. You're going to have twice as much demand on a max day as you would on an average day. We also went through and did a storage capacity analysis, as Mark said. Now, this is... There's a lot of numbers and graphs and charts that go into this, but this is the result of that, that currently, right now, we do have, we, city, has reserved storage of a little over 150,000 gallons. This is taking into account, assuming a maximum day, and a fire is going on at the same time, and a fire of the magnitude would be an industrial fire, 3,500 gallons per minute for three hours. So, a very substantial fire, which is actually the maximum credit you can receive from the insurance services office, ISO. Oops, sorry, wrong button. Looking into currently, if Staran Park Tank were to be removed, you essentially go down to a zero balance of storage, so you don't have any left over, essentially. That's important because I want to talk a little bit about the Staran Park Tank. We look into the future, 2037, that just due to increased population projections, obviously, you're going to have more domestic demand. Fire demand stays the same, but we are projecting a storage deficit of 275,000 gallons if the Staran... And that's assuming that Staran Park stays in service for the next 20 years, and Rick might be laughing at that statement, actually. And then if Staran Park Tank were to be removed, the storage deficit does increase to a little over 400,000 gallons. One thing we looked at also was the well number seven reservoir being removed, again, because of its advanced age, 128 years old, I believe, this year. That storage deficit then goes up to a little bit north of 650,000 gallons. From the modeling analysis, and again, this looked perfect on my screen, I apologize, we ran all sorts of different sorts of analyses. We looked at average days, we looked at max days, we looked at peak hours, we looked at fire flows, we looked at current system, we looked at future system, but again, to maintain some brevity here, generally, your pressures and fire flows are pretty adequate, and then the areas of lowest pressure, which I'm sure people are aware of if they live over there, are kind of on the west side, southwest side of the city, where your pressures are on the 40 to 50 PSI range, kind of on the lower range that Mark talked about in the system components slide. And just to showcase that there's, your highest fire flow protection is actually up here in the industrial park, which is just a function of your large Crabbeath half-million gallon elevated tank having a strong hydraulic connection and looping with large diameter mains. So, just due to the proximity and the size of the mains, your highest fire flows in the industrial park where it should be, where all your largest buildings are. For the future growth areas, again, these future growth areas were obtained from the comp plan and with the assistance of kind of Mark's institutional knowledge of the city and kind of seeing where things are going. So, again, wrong button. So, these are here in the red, I guess, hashed lines as to where these future growth areas were modeled then. Again, we looked at the same things, average day, max day, peak hour, fire flows, and all of these are in the report, and not to clutter up the screen with a bunch of contours that would be hard to see. Also, as part of the future modeling, the city has several long, I guess, dead ends with water main, with large tracks of development attached to the end of those water mains, and in particular, there are probably five notable areas where there is only one water main serving this development. So, the five areas would be kind of south of Lake Trip down here. Another area would be this entire, I guess, great area right here, especially with LS Power up here. The third priority would be down... This is kind of not really too much development down here, but it would make sense to have a loop through here for future developments. Priority number four would be looping these two areas, and priority number five eventually is kind of looping these two areas back to each other over here. And we just have some cost estimates on here as to what we think, the opinion of probable cost, it would be to perform these loops. And the idea particularly of the loop up here and the loop down here is, again, large areas of land. If the main were to break right here, or say the main were to break under the river and the lake right here, it could be a substantial amount of time before service could be restored to these areas. So, again, it just provides redundancy to these areas. The looping also provides some ancillary fire protection benefits, because now you have water coming from both directions as opposed to one direction, so kind of a bonus right there. Mark also says, so we looked at a tank siting, preliminary tank siting analysis, and this was in anticipation that the Staran Park Tank would be decommissioned, and you'd be looking for a new site to put new elevated storage. We looked at four areas. The four areas would be down here, Trip Lake Park Site. There was a high school site over here in the southwest side. We looked at a university site here on the northwest side, and then the fourth area was also way down on the southwest side. And some of the siting factors in these four areas were agreed upon by the city to investigate. Some of the siting factors would be topography, so we're actually looking for areas of high elevation, because if you can utilize higher ground, you can make the tank shorter, which makes it cheaper. So, we focused on, it's hard to see, but areas in green and areas in orange are actually the higher areas of town. So, you can see that, you know, these four areas that we circled, you know, it's pretty high down here in the southwest. There's a knoll over here near the high school. There's kind of a hill up here in the university site, and again, there's kind of a hill over here. So, that's where we were trying to focus our efforts. Lot size, generally, you need 150 by 200-foot squared area to fit everything that you need for a tank onto a site, and none of the sites here had that constraint. We looked at hydraulics, is how well or how not well is the tank connected to the remainder of the system, and we looked at some system head curves, and again, we actually used the new created and calibrated model to look at the hydraulics. FAA requirements, if you're within some various plane projected from the end of a runway, and your tank intersects that imaginary plane, you need to provide notice to the airport. Sometimes, it's just a lighting requirement. Sometimes, it's just a heads-up. If you're really close, they're going to say, "No, you can't put it here." There really were no major issues with anything FAA required. In terms of site work, that would be more related to how close is it to water main already. Most of these areas have large water main actually running adjacent to them. The only one that wouldn't be would be somewhere in the southwest side over here, and I apologize for people that can't see this. You'd have to run a water main a fair amount of distance to serve that tank, which is, again, added cost, which all kind of ties down into development costs. Also, if you'd have to purchase the land, as I think, if I recall, this one was already owned by the city, I believe, so there'd be no purchase cost on that, but the remainder of them would have to be purchased, so there's definitely a cost to that. Based on all of that, it was our recommended, or recommendation, that a new location for the elevated tank would be the high school site down here in the southwest corner. It was a somewhat shorter tank, very close proximity to large transmission main. You wouldn't have to extend main very far. The hydraulics were very good and well-connected to the remainder of the wells in the system. These numbers may scare you, but it's, tanks are expensive. The base numbers were obtained from a tank contract, or a tank construction firm out of Chicago, CBNI, Chicago Bridge and Iron. They did provide cost estimates for this, and this does include a small amount of contingency to cover any unintended rock removal, or you got to build a deeper foundation, and all things like that. And then finally, for some considerations and kind of summary of what we found in the report, is that, you know, it's a very strong system currently. There is reserve well supply. There is reserve storage capacity currently with Staran Park Tank in existence. Also, there's no additional well supply needed in the future, and this is something I actually forgot to point out back here, when Mark was talking about... When Mark was talking about firm capacity, um, I believe we were on the, uh, five-million gallon per day firm capacity, which is signified by the dashed green line at five million gallons per day. That, you know, average day, you're not having half of that. On a max day, LS Power taking a lot of water, um, you're getting close up there, but you're still not exceeding that. So, again, a lot of, uh, well supply here in the system. Additional storage capacity is needed in the future regardless if Staren Park Tank goes away, regardless if well seven reservoir goes away, it's just a function of, um, increased population. How much storage capacity is, kinda depends on the Staren Park Tank and also well seven, as I had said before. We talked about the recommended looping of these periphery dead ends for redundancy and fire protection. I think Mark and I have talked about this a little bit. Some might be developer-driven, very few would be devi- maybe none would be developer-driven. But, 'cause there's just no development over there, but we have to connect these long dead ends together, uh, again, for the redundancy and fire protection. So, but that comes down to a cost issue, uh, so kind of a risk versus reward sort of thing. Staren Park Tank operational issues is kinda the main, uh, deal behind wanting to maybe decommission this tank besides rocks falling off of, of it, but which is now fixed, right, Rick, I guess? Some of it, okay. So, the main operational issues would be, uh, it's hard to maintain a constant water level when LS Power is drawing two-thousand gallons a minute, and you have a very small amount of storage in between LS Power and the rest of your system. So, all the wells are looking at Staren Park Tank to turn on and off, and the water level's moving up and down, and pumps are turning on and off. So, it just becomes kind of an operational nightmare from the water system to, um, have any sense of normalcy when these, uh, demand spikes are going all over the place. One thing that wasn't talked about too much in the report, but something to maybe consider talking about here in the future, is, uh, the well number seven operational issues. Without getting into too much detail, only about half of the volume is usable. So, even though there's almost nine-hundred-thousand gallons in the ground, you can only use maybe four-hundred-thousand gallons due to currently unidentified issues with between the reservoir and the booster pumping station. And then, um, one thing, again, to consider but not really talked about in the report, would be west side existing and future development pressures. As Mark said, there are some lower pressures over on the west and southwest side. Putting a tank in that general vicinity will not boost pressure, but it'll help stabilize pressures. We're talking one, two, three PSI over there, but nothing too substantial. And really, the only way to increase pressure over in that area would be to construct some sort of additional boosted zone, but now you're talking building the tank even higher in that zone, putting up a booster pumping station, perhaps running wells, I think, nine and, uh, six into that boosted zone. But those are all sorts of other improvements that are, um, would have to be considered if a separate boosted area were to want to be implemented to resolve these pressure issues. And that's all I have, so.
Any questions, Eric Cameron, do you have any?
If I can, if I could start before, before the council asks some questions. A couple of things that Justin and Eric that I, I, we've talked about before, but I thought might be good to, uh, help explain to the rest of the council, since only one of us here is, is in anything to do with engineering. But, uh, regarding those pressures, if you look, it's not in your presentation, but it is in the report, the contour, contour maps that provide, um, and provide and il- illustrate pressures. You'll see on the ones that are in color, if anybody grabbed the color version of this report. Yeah, you, yeah, Jimmy, that second one is exactly the kind of a thing. There's one map that's located, the one I'm looking at in particular, if anybody wants to follow along, is after, just immediately follows page, um, five dash three. What's that?
Finger numbered for those?
Oh, thanks, even better, figure number. Figure number five point oh-four dash one. I'm looking at right now, and it's the twenty seventeen maximum day pressure contours. So, we have, the legend forty PSI is the red contour lines, um, for those of you that have it in color. What, what is the, what causes that? Is there something in our system that is not functioning right? Or is there something, is it just distribution of pressure over, over the distance from our towers and booster stations? What, what is it that causes that area to be kind of a low-pressure zone? And I'm asking about it because I've had, um, a couple di- people at a couple different times ask me about, you know, when I turn the shower on at such and such a time of day, it's drizzling out of there like there's no pressure at all. And I, I know that there's, there's concern about, uh, at least one resident in the Indian Mountain Park area. So, just wanted to ask that, and I don't know how much of that you can answer. I didn't prep you beforehand with.
I can answer all this.
Okay, perfect.
Long answer or short answer?
Yeah, as, as short as possible, I guess, probably.
Short answer is elevation of the ground versus the water level in the tank. Water levels in the tank fluctuate, well operation fluctuates. So, if there's a well near their house that happens to be on, they're gonna see a slight bump in pressure. If the tank is more full than usual, they're gonna see a slight bump in pressure. But if the star is kind of aligned and the tank's dropping a little bit and the well's off, they're gonna see the very bottom of the pressure. That combined with the fact that that's a higher part of the city means there's just less static head pushing down from the water level on that area.
Thank you.
I think we should ask Mr. Lynn, though, for some further comment on that regarding the controls. With that well over there, as I recall, you've researched this a lot, and I know you have further insight into our issue on the west.
Actually, gonna invite him up and see if he had any comments, so this.
What Justin is saying is very true on the elevations, but what, um, but, uh, what Lynn has discussed with me several times, is a situation in some areas on the west side, particularly off of Indian Mountain Parkway, um, that area. There's, there's a situation where somebody may be standing in the shower, and all of a sudden, they'll have a slight, not a slight decrease, a big decrease in pressure for, um, one to five seconds, probably. And, uh, that's because of elevations. The low pressure up there is because of elevations and so forth. But what we're experiencing now, um, is that, uh, our SCADA operating system that operates the, the, all the pumps and pressures and so forth. We have a problem with the programming because it's, it's so old, and we are working on that, um, with a new SCADA system. But, uh, essentially, what happens is when we change well matrix, uh, pumping lists, that these pumps are supposed to slowly, um, engage while the other ones disengage. So, you don't see any lapse of pressures, and as there's an overlap of between the pumps turning on and turning off. Because of our, um, o- old unsupported software now, obsolete software, that isn't working correctly the way it should. And so, we are getting some rough starts and stops. And what you essentially have is, is the water, like, like a reverse water hammer. You, the, the waters having the brakes turned on, and you'll lose pressure for a short time, and it'll come on. And that's, um, um, that's all related to low pressures in that particular area, along with our operating system. Lynn and I have talked a long time on this, I've researched this a lot, um, and as long as we're talking about that a second. The last time we put in a SCADA system was two thousand and one. Be honest with you, I thought I knew a lot about it. But once we started researching on our SCADA system, um, talking to other communities, talking to several, several jobbers, uh, I, I learned a great deal in, in my research and what we need to do. And, uh, it's taken a little longer than what, uh, what I anticipated, but it's all good, because when we put this next system in, it's gonna be a good system to last. I believe that, um, when we, when we put this other system in two thousand and one, we replaced an old DOS system, which pretty much didn't do anything, just a little bit better than turning a switch on once in a while. And this system was good at the time, but right now, it's, it's pretty obsolete. So, that's what we're working on replacing right now. And, uh, when we do get it replaced, it, it'll be a very valuable asset to, to the water utility.
Any other questions?
It is interesting when one's soaked up and wonders whether there's going to be water to rinse off. But, thank goodness, you always do provide the rinse water. On page one fifty-six, it seems like an anomaly here. I'm not understanding exactly what the accounted-for water amounts to. It's apparently the sales plus the unaccounted-for, but, golly, in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, it seems like a real anomaly, especially in twenty fourteen. Did we have huge leaks at that period of time? Twenty fourteen in particular is a major bump on page one fifty-six.
Well, that's with a packet, right?
Correct.
For, for, for someone at the report, it's the historic water pumpage and sales data table?
Right.
Okay.
Justin, um, every year, as Justin had said, that, uh, we take our, uh, they take the information off Public Service Commission reports. I do those reports every year, um, and, um, it's, it's quite extensive. And unaccounted-for water is, um, and Justin has a much different way of, of stating it than I do. He's very passionate about his work, what I've found out, and, um, I told Mark that every time I talk to him on the phone, I have a dictionary in my hand. So, um, my explanation may be a little different than Justin's. But unaccounted-for water is.
I'm talking about the accounted-for, actually.
The accounted-for water?
It seems like it goes from eighty-seven thousand to ninety-four to a hundred and six to a hundred and twenty-one. So, what, what is that variance there, is I think what Lynn is asking? On the accounted-for water, for twenty twelve through twenty fifteen?
Correct.
On accounted-for water, yeah.
Apparently, you don't have an answer right on the tip of your tongue.
I, you know, I, I will let Justin explain on, on his figures, how he came up with it, because, um, not all that from here.
So, uh, the accounted-for water is a different unit than the accounted-for water. So, um, let's not look at that last column, but you wanna look at accounted-for water, correct? You're saying there? So, um, accounted-for water is basically just how much water was sold that year. And the differences in annual, uh, water sales that year is kinda also based off of pumpage in a particular year. So, you can see here on this graph, um, some years, you're at two-million gallons pumped, and then one year, like in twenty fifteen, you're at one-point-five million gallons per day pumped. So, it's just, there's huge swings in how much the water system puts out, as well as, I mean, the sales ratio stays the same approximately. But, um, it's just how much water was, um, used on, at, on average, on a particular year, I guess, is how I wanna say it. So, um.
So, in other words, if LS Power is not.
If it's a cold year, yeah.
Natural gas that year and using their cooling tower, that accounts for quite a bit of it. But also, drought would increase the amount that people are watering their lawns, et cetera, so.
Yeah, so, you know, when we used a lot of water, we, again, sorry, city, used a lot of water here, like in twenty, whatever year that would be, thirteen? Or, sorry, twelve? It could've been a drought year, so a lot of sprinkling happened. LS Power happened to use a lot of water, 'cause they're kind of an on-demand instantaneous water user for their cooling purposes.
More importantly, then, um, you talked about the huge fluctuations that occur related to LS Power. If we ultimately, uh, did what you essentially suggested in terms of taking both the Staren Park Tower and the reservoir there out of service and had a southwestern tower, how does that impact that huge amount of drawn for LS Power?
There is some pretty substantial main between, so, again, it's kinda grainy to see, but Staren Tank is right here. Then LS Power is up this line, up at the end of the sixteen-inch way up here. The nearest next source of elevated supply, as you said, would be the Crabth Tank right here. But if I remember my legend correctly, we've got fourteen-inch main coming up here. Unfortunately, there's a four-inch bottleneck here on Fremont, near the water treatment, uh, facility. But then it goes back to, I believe, twelve and sixteen-inch all the way back up. So, there is still a pretty strong hydraulic connection between the large water user and a source of elevated, uh, supply. I, I would argue that this would be a priority to replace, just to get rid of that bottleneck, or else you're kinda forced to come up and around, I believe, to get around this bottleneck here. That particular instance, I don't think was modeled, though, so I apologize for that.
We also need to be prepared if you wanna take down the wa- the water tower on Staren Park.
Or if it comes down itself.
That is, that is the second oldest water tower of its kind in the state of Wisconsin.
I thought you meant the curse.
It may be a landmark.
Yes, it is.
In the city of Whitewater, who has been trying to brand itself for as long as I can remember, closest thing we've come to is, for lack of a better word, witchcraft. You know, that tower's haunted, so. So, so we might, we're gonna get some kickback, right?
If, if we move forward with taking that water tower down.
Well, you can.
I'm sorry, Justin. To address that, the, the plan would never be to take the tower down.
Never?
You can take it offline without demolishing it, it's still a.
Just like Fort Atkinson did, what, what they did over there is that they've got a historic tower in Fort Atkinson.
They just decommissioned it?
It's been out of service since, um, sometime in the late eighties, I believe. And so, they decommissioned it, they cut off the water mains to it. And then, the historical society, uh, had fundraisers, and they restored the tower, put, put the observation deck on top again, and which Whitewater used to have an obsidy, uh, observation deck around.
That'd be a great place for observations, highest place in the city.
And they opened it up, um, for tours, uh, occasionally during the summer over in Fort Atkinson. That's what I envisioned that the city would do with that tower. It's never my intention to, to have that tower, um, taken down, and, and like you made it to. I, I would sure hate to tell the witches that they gotta move.
You've, you've been accosted by them there, I know. I remember.
Any other questions, Mr. Allen?
No, no, good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you all for, for coming tonight and doing the presentation. All right, next, we'll move on to C three, update on parking regulations along Prince and Peck Street near Lincoln Elementary School. Cameron?
All right, now, there's a, an image, I'll fill it, or Justin, if you can.
This one?
Yeah, thank you, pull that back up. That would be greatly appreciated. This is just a, this is just a, really, an update, and certainly, we would act, take a different action if the council so desired. But we, at the start of school for this year, the school district encountered a few different challenges with the parking along, parking restrictions along Prince Street and Peck Street. I think overall, the, the issues with South Prince Street have been addressed, but the concern with Peck Street, or one of the concerns, I guess, in general, causing problems was the schedule and staging of construction, and how that impacted parking. So, the council acted, um, some time ago now, or this year, earlier before the summer, to enact parking restrictions on Peck Street as part of, as an addition to a request by the school district to restrict parking on South Prince, essentially in front of and immediately, um, south of. of the elementary school. And that was for children's safety, that the request was coming in from the school district to restrict parking on South Prince Street, but in an effort also to make it easier for buses to move in and out of what is, you can see on that map, Peck Street kind of going in a, in a horseshoe shape around some private properties behind, by the school and around. In order to facilitate the flow of buses in that area, the city council also acted to restrict parking on Peck Street. And the actual language is no stopping, standing, or parking from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM during scheduled school days, I believe is where is the language for the ordinance. What we've done in the interim time, because there is a limited amount of parking on, on the actual site, staff and volunteers are having difficulty getting in, getting, finding a parking spot, we've restricted, or eliminated, lifted the restriction on parking on Peck Street. So signs have been temporarily covered or removed, I believe they have actually all been removed, and we would look to reinstate the parking restrictions once the construction is complete and the parking spaces are available on the site of the elementary school. We won't re, reinstate the parking restrictions until everyone in the area has received notice that they're going back into effect. So I just wanted to make the council aware and provide the council with an opportunity to give direction, if there's an objection to that action that we've taken, to let me know, and I'd be glad to change it, but that's what, that's where we sit right now, until the parking is back to being fully available on, on site of Lincoln Elementary School.
All right. We do have somebody in the public question to speak, I believe, somebody directly affected across the street.
Yes. Someone who's seen all of the different parking ups and downs in the last few weeks.
I think he wants Prince to reclose.
Tom Miller, 221 South Prince Street. Everything has worked beautiful, believe it or not, with a little help from the CSO and one of the staff members that directs traffic a little bit. The buses used to come up Peck Street, and now they come down Highlands, they come down Highland Street and make a right turn onto Prince and park in front of the school. There's only three buses. They all unload pretty much at the same time. Everything really works quite well. The only problem that we see, I mean, I've been standing out there, I've watched what's going on in the morning, is the handicap spot. People come and use the handicap spot, and it, it just causes the problem of one vehicle being there. And to me, if you eliminate parking on a street, why do you need a handicap spot? There are handicap spots in the parking lot where you're supposed to park. So that really, that one spot is the only holdup that we see, and I've been standing out there on a daily basis, but I think it's working quite well. Would, if my recommendation is to eliminate that spot, and I understand that it has to be done through the, the council, so. But other than that, I think it's, it's working good.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom.
Tom?
Can't.
Mr. Miller?
Tom. Lynn has a question.
Do you know whether the buses are planning to continue that same route even after the construction is completed? Have you heard that? I'm just wondering whether the elimination of parking on Peck Street is necessary once construction is completed.
I really don't know that answer. Dave Nelson from the bus companies stood in my, he came and parked in my driveway and we watched what was going on, and he made no indication that in another, I think they've re, what they've done is cut down the number of buses, where they're, they're picking them up at either the middle school or the high school, I'm not sure, and, and putting them into just three buses. And that has helped considerably, is, you know, the number, but, and they had to put some sidewalks in so when they're unloading, and it's not on grass, but I don't know, it seems to me it works pretty good the way it is, but in the future, when they open that back up where you can loop around and get out of there, I don't know. That's, that's not up to me, but.
Thanks for your input.
Cameron, did you have anything?
Just a couple things. So on that, the, on the last point, the, I've, I've had two different conversations with the, the administrator for the school district, and the, you know, it's, it's kind of like, I think of it like playgrounds, you have to, you have to separate out the different types of activities, so the kids on the swings aren't smacking the kids playing in the sandbox when they go swinging back and forth. It's kind of, in my brain, it fits a lot with the whole idea about parking. Everybody's coming in, you've got visitors, they need to have a parking area, you've got buses, they need to have a parking area, and you've got staff members and those that are coming actually to work in the facility, they need to have a parking area, and all those areas need to be separate. So the, to the question of whether we need to have the restriction when everything is done, we probably would, would be coming back to this body. We, myself, and working with our planner, as well as, as the school district, coming back with some suggested changes to what we've done already, probably, once that construction is complete. And regarding the handicap spot, I should be, but I'm not equipped to, to answer. I, I don't think Chuck is either, but he's, if you are, Chuck, feel free to answer regarding it's, it's a requirement to have a space, and so-
For after-school functions.
So to-
The signs are outside.
During the school hours.
Hours.
Yes.
During school.
Right. So, thank you, and so because you're not on a microphone, just to repeat that, then the, the, the spot has been kept there because it's meant to be a spot for use for other events and activities happening in the area and at the school building outside of regular school hours. I can talk with the, with the district administrator and our Streets, Parks, Forestry Superintendent more about that, and we've, I've noticed that as well, and it's the one, it's the one thing still sitting there. So if there's a way to move it, we can probably do something.
My understanding is there are four spots designated for disabled parking in the parking lot, just adjacent to that, so I would think that could be eliminated.
It's, it all depends on the person parking there, because the spots in the back, if you've got to come through the front office to come in the building, it's, it's just, there's lots of different things, factors to consider, but coming into the building at the front, if you need and merit the designation for challenges with mobility, then you've, you've actually got to park in the, and you park in the back, you've got to walk up the driveway and around the front to get to the door where you ring a buzzer and go in. So the way that, the way everything is designed, that side access is not currently, I believe, intended to be a, a public access point. So the, throughout the construction and in the future, that's, that spot is an issue, so.
Ms. Gable?
Well, I would be curious, too, it may just be, I assume they probably have after-school events, and it may just be that there's not adequate, I mean, if you have an after-school event with a substantial number of grandparents, which I mean, no disrespect, but you anticipate more need for disabled parking at that time, and it may simply be that the disabled parking in the parking lot is, may not be adequate after 4:00 PM. So I, I think Cameron speaks to a valid point, though, is that the location of those spaces, if you're just going in the front entry of the building, may not be perfect, so. I, I, I don't know that eliminating it would be in the best interest of the community, although I think maybe clarification of the fact that people can't use it when there's not parking allowed would, would be good.
Mr. Allen?
Right. I think to clarify a little bit, the, the spots there and the people that are enforcing at the moment, there were to the understanding that the handicap overrode the signs of no stopping and standing. If the clarification would change to the fact of saying the, the signs from 7:00 to 4:30 override the, the handicap, so that it's there, other than those times from 7:00 to 4:30.
Any further discussion on this? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. C4, discussion, possible direction regarding governance process and standards for council boards and commissions. Mr. Grady?
Basically, what this is involving is trying to come up with some standards for our boards and commissions as to how they conduct their business, when they conduct their business, that type of thing. I was kind of shocked when some adventures happened with one of the boards I'm on, and there basically are no standards. To give you an example, if a board decided that four of the people would vote for holding their board meetings at 3:00 in the morning, there is nothing stopping them from doing that. That is not something that is good governance. So basically, what I'm proposing is, we talked to Patrick and Cameron, and he suggested himself, Patrick, Wally, and I get together and come up with a draft set of rules, regulations, ordinance, however you want to put it, to bring back to the council to then talk about at a later date.
I think you, you, we had talked a little bit about this because there were some concerns about just having standards around boarding commissions so that there is some predictability.
But I'm on a board that meets infrequently, as needed, and because of our schedules, it's kind of uncommon for us to meet at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Not 3:00 AM, but-
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing, I'm not saying you can't do that. You just need to have, there, there just needs to be some standards as to what we should be doing. If you want to hold a meeting that's outside of normal evening hours, maybe you go to, Cameron needs to approve those on a yearly basis or something like that. I don't know. That's what we got to talk through, that whole process.
The concern that I think I've heard, you, you speak to, Mr. Grady, is, you know, having board meetings that are somewhat set up to exclude maybe one member due to their availability, you know, how does that get corrected? And we don't want to, there is no one-size-fits-all.
No.
Years ago, we talked about potentially making all our boarding commissions start after 5:30 so that people were able to make it, or 6:00, and that didn't, that wasn't adopted just because there is that need for flexibility. One of the issues, though, that we will be bringing up, that we did talk about when Cameron and I attended the Landmarks Commission meeting, is what is the process for bringing ordinances forth? You know, we've all brought ordinances forth before, just what, as a council, is our process going to be in terms of instructing Wally to draft something, if it does have impact on a particular board or commission or stakeholder group, making sure that they're notified and aware of it before it gets put on a council agenda? So that is also kind of in that same vein of what Chris is getting to, is, you know, are there just some things we need to do to tidy up a little bit?
Yes.
What does that look like? Is it a work group that just kind of goes off and, and comes back with some recommendations? Or is it something that Mr. Grady could, could draft, or, you know, what is, what does the council want in terms of, of input at this point?
And that's what I, you know, I'm wondering, is, I don't necessarily know that it's a great idea to have a standard policy regarding times, you know, I'm just wondering about a policy regarding communications and how many people on a committee need to agree about times, you know, because I'm really surprised this is an issue, I really haven't run into this as a major issue. I've been on a few committees where, you know, I, I'm working on my master's part-time, and so occasionally I'll have a class, and the committee regularly meets Thursdays, and I'm like, okay, well, now I have a night class Thursday nights, and we've just moved the meeting to Wednesdays. I've, I've really not encountered any major issues with those things, but I think if we narrow it down to you have to meet in these specific parameters, I, I don't really want to do anything that creates an even bigger issue attracting members to committees. I think we already have enough of a problem with that. But I do think if committees are making it impossible for council reps or anyone, for that matter, citizen reps or otherwise, to be at committees, that is a problem. So, you know, I, I think maybe the policy could be something more along the lines of, you know, there needs to be a discussion, this many people need to come to a consensus regarding the time, you know. There can't be any sort of, you know, intentionally making it impossible for someone to come to a meeting, but also, I don't think we need to say every meeting needs to be after 5:30 or before 9:00 AM, because I just don't think that that's a reasonable expectation.
That's, like I said, that's why we wanted to get a group together and talk through and try to figure out something from a legal point of view, from Wally's point of view, what could be done, and at the same time, get two or three of us together that are involved in the whole process and try to come up with something and bring it back and see what everybody thinks.
Yeah, because I think your point is very valid, I just don't want it to get so narrow that if a group needed to meet outside the time and everybody agreed, they would be in violation of a policy.
No, 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 that, that wasn't my intention at all.
And I think the timing of this also fits with, with the commitment that Cameron and I made to the Landmarks Commission to address just what is our process as a council for drafting and bringing stuff forth, just so there's an orderly feature, we all understand it, and the boarding commissions do as well. So if we're good with, you know, Chris potentially bringing something back, we'll have a debate. Next time, I know Cameron, when we talk to the Landmarks, we're going to look at what other committees do in terms of the kind of standing rules, in terms of ordinances and what that introduction and review process looks like. We've had this debate before, with as many years as we've all been on it, you know, can any of us just ask Wally to draft something, or does it take two of us, or does it take a full council action, majority vote? So I think just having some standards, because over the years, it kind of ebbs and flows and it's just, there's nothing really in writing on that that gives us any kind of standards. And it only comes up when things don't go well. I think that's the problem.
Yeah, that's exactly it. I mean, to, to give you a feel for, for example, the second meeting, when I was at Landmarks, I asked to change the meeting to 6:30 from 6:00, and half of the Landmarks Commission, there was only six of us, voted for changing it and half voted no. And since it was a tie, it stayed at 6:00, which is a hardship for actually three of the seven people at this point. And when I asked why we couldn't move the half hour, it was because I don't want to, was the answer I got back. I mean, that, that's just, that's not good governance.
And I think the, the issue that, you know, I've seen when we've been talking about some of these issues is taking the personalities out of it, and what is, what is a reasonable process that transcends any kind of disagreement of people?
That's my concern, is I don't want us to regularly be writing ordinances in responses to personal conflict.
So if there is some, some things that may improve things overall as a body, let's look at those otherwise, I don't think we need to adopt it. We debated those kind of rules before, so we'll bring something back on the whole ordinance process. Chris can bring back any suggestions he has, and we'll plan on having that on our next agenda. All right. Next up, we have C5, appointment of citizen members to boarding commissions. So there was only one board to be considered tonight, and that is the Burge Fountain Committee, which has had some membership challenges in the recent past. So there were applicants this time around, Cameron and I reviewed them, and we're making a recommendation that Mike Higgins and Patrick Wellness be appointed to the Burge Fountain. And I would make that a motion.
Second.
All right, it's moved in seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, I don't think there's so many people who left, moved out of town.
Yeah, there's been some turnover on it. It's a board that meets infrequently, so people-
As needed.
-don't, don't have it on their schedule all the time. All right.
Just one comment, and it's probably oversensitivity on the part of the city manager, but just to make sure, the record would show that while one of the applicants did list me as a reference, that was never discussed, and I make it a policy never to be involved in referring anybody to a committee or commission. So lest anyone reading this in the future thinks otherwise, I wanted to make sure that was on the record.
All right. So the motion is to approve the two applicants. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call Michelle.
McCormick?
Aye.
Shulgood?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Benny?
Aye.
Gable?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. We move on to C6, action on findings of alcohol licensing committee hearing for Colin Riggs. Ms. Gable?
We had a meeting prior to, I think, September 5th, council meeting regarding Colin Riggs' application for his operator's license. The police had recommended denial. We found in that hearing that that was, in fact, a very good recommendation. Mr. Riggs had been, in fact, arrested only in May for operating while under the influence and operating of prohibited alcohol concentration, so within the last four months, he had been arrested for an alcohol-related offense, and the committee found unanimously that that was reason to recommend upholding the denial. And with that, I would make a motion to uphold the denial of the license.
Second.
All right, so it's moved in seconded to approve, or uphold the denial of the beverage All right, so it's moved in second to approve, or uphold the denial of the beverage operator's license for Colin Riggs. I do not see him present, so is there any other discussion by council? All right, roll call Michelle.
Shulget?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Gadel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
All right, motion passed, we move on to C7, council requests for future agenda items, and for Polco, citizens offer questions. I'll start now with Mr. Shulget.
Did you make a question if the people who are taking the poll were students or not? If they were students at the university, that would be the only thing that I would have.
Yes, so I did also, I did take note of that question that you had, and also the questions that all of you had asked last meeting were all addressed and sent to Polco, and I received information today about that, and I had a conversation with him over the phone. So, per our plans, I was going to post those questions tomorrow, the first, the next four on our list. If there's any difference, if you would like to change that, or you'd like me to do them every week instead of two weeks, as we discussed, whatever you would like to do, I will happily do, and then I can send you an email, though, with all the information with the questions you had asked from the last meeting.
That answers that, thank you.
Is there anything from this agenda you would like to be placed on to the Polco for a question?
I may have a parking one, but we'll wordsmith that.
That sounds good, all right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Vinnie?
If you want something exciting, you could ask about taking down the Stern Park Water Tower.
Mr. Grady?
No. I'd like to, because a lot of people have been asking me an update on the grocery store investigation, as well as maybe an update on the co-op, their project.
I don't have anything, Mr. Allen?
No, I second her motion, thank you.
Ms. Gadel?
I would like to see, I mean, hopefully relatively soon, it doesn't have to be before the next meeting, but some questions related to the two things we talked about tonight, which are related to the housing study, potentially some questions, you know, related to what citizens would be interested in seeing come out of that, because I think there are a few different ideas in the community about what that should look like, and then some parking-related questions as well. But I think those, you know, I'd like to see some ideas maybe come back from the PR committee, whose name is escaping, I'm sorry, just maybe how to phrase those, but I don't right off the top of my head, no, so.
All right, next up, we adjourn to closed session, not to reconvene pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, 85 pair and 1 pair and E, to learn negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing public funds, or conducting other specified public business, if our competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, and the only item to be discussed tonight is contract and agreements with UW Whitewater related to parking on city streets. And for this, we will have our normal city staff at the dais, and also invite in Mr. Steve Hatten as well.
Second.
All right, roll call Michelle.
McCormick?
Aye.
Shulget?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Gadel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
All right. Motion passed, we move on to C7, council requests for future agenda items, and for Polco, citizens offer questions.